Alright, everybody ready? Alright, let's say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the other for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, listen, everybody but John here tonight.
What's the timing again for John?
I had his talk with him, hopefully mid-July.
Okay.
That's what we're shooting for right now. He is, he is getting better, that's the, that's the big deal right now.
Good.
Alright. If I could find the minutes. Okay guys, what about the agenda?
There you go. Brent, is there anything on there, on the agenda that we need to?
Any changes?
Nothing I'm aware of, so we'll do a sheriff update next meeting.
Okay, so unless you guys.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Brian makes a motion, Dave does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, consent agenda. Think all this stuff's on there, pretty much just what we were talking about, right Jim? Okay, Lucas, you got one?
So Dee, if that's for twenty nineteen dash two, approval of that's gonna have to be contingent on availability of bond funds.
Okay.
So, so you just wanna be aware of that, that if you do approve the consent, and that's on there, it's gonna have to contingent on availability of bond funds, which sounds like maybe end of June or beginning of July.
Okay, so we're still probably thirty days out, I suppose?
Is that a permanent bond, or is that a temporary?
Temporary, it's a temporary bond, yeah, short-term bond.
How long does the city have to pay us if they would approve it? Thirty days, right?
I think that's what you have. But we'll just have to let the contractor know. It is what it is.
For the three hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Thirty-four cents. This is for the roundabout and Seventy-Sixth Avenue, performed by Northern Improvement.
Would you feel more comfortable if we waited till the next meeting to do this? So we're in that thirty-day window, just in case we have to go long with the bonding?
I mean, I would be, but.
Jim?
I mean, you can have.
They've been working for a month and a half, two months, eventually they're gonna wanna get paid.
I know, I know.
So, that's my, that's my two cents.
But I don't want the thirty-day window to close, and we have to go back to rehash this again either.
What's the, what about the portion that the county is going to provide, and are we going to get that?
I don't know how that looked out in the agreement.
That's a reimbursement.
So, we have to take out?
I believe, I believe it's reimbursement, so, yep.
Thank you.
But is it a matter of you could approve this and then they could reimburse it? This first one, 'cause it's all.
We could, we could work with the county and see. But if it, if it doesn't hurt to table it for a meeting, we could table that one. It's, if we're going to still meet our window.
Jim, I'm just looking at you for some advice on this one.
I think they're gonna be, I think they're gonna be not happy that they aren't getting paid.
Yeah.
Personally.
It's a lot of them.
We're just, yeah, avail, we're just, based on availability funds.
Okay, I mean, I'm okay with that, like I said, as long as the contractor understands that, then we'll be doing it when we get the funding.
No, it's, it's, yeah, end of June, beginning of July.
Right.
The city can't do anything more to rush.
No, I know, that's, right.
But I understand, I understand, yeah.
But I just wanna make sure the contractor understands that, then too, that if we have to go a little long, we're still within the window here.
And that's it, I just let them know that.
Okay.
County is administering that project, so I'll let the county know. That's what's going on in this end.
Okay. Okay, any other questions again?
Is this the final invoice for Excel?
All but five thousand in retainage, we have a couple.
They're just modifying the quantities and the supplies that they were, they received, or?
Yep, yep.
So, we, we should see one more small one?
You'll see one more for, I have five thousand dollars. I think is what I retained was five thousand dollars.
Okay, so it's basically, we're still, let's see here, where was it?
Up one more. That's the balancing change order, so that balances the contract with the asked constructed quantities.
Oh, sure.
Uh, we base it off of estimated quantities, and at the end we balance it all, so that the contract matches the costs that was installed.
Okay, so we're still?
Five thousand will be the next one.
Okay, so we are gonna end up?
We'll end up over what we originally thought, due to fluctuation in. We were, under-ran some bid-ings, we over-ran some. There was houses that were built in the time of the construction.
That's where the quantity needed?
Yep, meters, readers, and there were a couple that, uh, people didn't reply to our survey in the beginning, so we had to add a guess, and that's where we had a two-inch in there, there wasn't a two-inch to be installed, and there was some other deviations of those quantities, so.
Okay, so it's basically gonna come in right out?
It'll be that three sixty-one, five eight, five twenty-four, so.
So in terms of new builds though, from this, from whatever point four, right? We give them the correct stuff?
Yep, as part of the project, we are able to procure additional, additional stock, inventory of water meters, so those get sent out, and same thing with the transmitters, they get distributed to the.
And then is it up to us as a city to get them turned on and linked and all that kind of stuff?
The city has the only, uh, control box for the system, because of the frequency that they have to transmit at. So yeah, that's, uh, something that the city has to go up.
Okay. Any other questions on this, guys, otherwise I'm gonna accept a motion to accept consent agenda with the contingent on the D.
So moved.
Okay, Dave makes a motion, can you get a second?
Second.
Okay, Brian does a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, um, meeting minutes, anybody see anything there? Not sure. Not, I will accept the motion to accept the minutes.
So.
Okay.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, move on to public comment, anybody got anything they wanna talk about tonight? We're good? Okay. Move along then to, uh, Wall Avenue and Eighty-Eighth Avenue. Brent, can you give us an update on that one?
Uh, this one's more of an update about Wall and Eighty-Eighth. Uh, as you may be aware, there is paving portion of Wall Avenue occurring east of Canal seventeen from basically just, just east of the Prairie View, uh, entrance into that subdivision to Terragardens, the entrance of that subdivision, it's about nine hundred feet. Uh, this was part of the overall development of Terragardens, and where all developments have pavement actually leading to them. Uh, that's something we've learned with Lost River, for example, where you didn't have pavement leading to, it's just gravel, and that's why all developments are requiring pavement now. So that, that project was a planned-out project for a while, it's, I think contractors waiting until school is done, and also to get the roads built within the subdivision.
Right.
Uh, we said that it's gonna be a two-to-three week window. Still anticipate it'll be approximately two weeks, it could be less. The weather has been more favorable since when we said two-to-three, two-to-three week window. Um, and we've, we're asking the contractor if they could do whatever they can, just to keep it moving. Uh, they'll have to do the pavement inside Terragardens first, and then work their way out, is my understanding of that. Uh, one complaint that we have been getting from residents in the Prairie View area and nearby is dust. That's actually been a complaint we're starting to get over the past week or so, as the weather, roads have dried out, now we're getting complaints of dust. Not as much on the detour route, 'cause obviously we had dust control put down. But, uh, outside of Wall Avenue, Wall Avenue is pretty dusty. Uh, Sixty-Fourth, there's portions of Sixty-Fourth that. Uh, Ponderosa, Seventy-Second, those are other areas where residents are asking for dust control. But for.
Basically one application, is what we're gonna have to do if it's really a two-week project?
It is.
No, no.
Well.
This is independent of.
This, this is independent, I'm just letting you know what's going on.
Okay.
So, I was getting to Wall. Uh, what we'd be recommending is, once the pavement is done on Wall Avenue, we would come in, put dust control until that last house, or just after that last house, uh, after the pavement, there's one more house there, and then once that's done, then the dust control would not, we wouldn't have any. But just to help knock down dust by individuals' houses.
Cause that road's getting used a little bit.
It's getting used a lot more.
Yeah.
I spoke with the property, one of the property owners this morning, and they indicated that uh, last year they noticed quite an increase in traffic as Prairie View development really started to fill in more. And then this year they saw even more increase, 'cause the, you know, people taking that, even though it's not a detour route, or does need a detour route, they noticed a lot more traffic on there too. So, that one does make sense for them to get some dust control on there. But, like I said, wanna update the council on up, or what's going on on Wall Avenue east of Canal seventeen, and then see if the council has interest to do dust control for that portion. Uh, we'll talk more about the other locations that are on town for dust controlling throughout the, or later in the agenda.
Okay, Jimmy, you had a question?
Paving starts tomorrow.
It does, okay.
On Teragardens, just so you guys know.
Yeah.
You guys have any thoughts on that, I mean, I can see the dust control.
Yeah, what are you meaning, so duration and cost?
Duration, dust control is typically pretty quick. Uh, Jim, please correct me if I'm wrong. Normally, we're able to get contractor out there that week. If we ask them on Monday, we're normally able to get out there, 'cause it's pretty quick, they just come out with the so-and-so red, and just spray it down. Uh, cost, to give you a comparison, last year we did Wall Avenue, uh, from the bridge, I believe, all the way to the diversion road, does that sound correct, Jim?
Uh, not quite that.
Or not quite that?
To the diversion.
To the diversion. And that was a couple thousand dollars for that section. I think this would be very similar.
I think that's.
I, I believe we'll probably easily have between seven, seven to ten thousand dollars in dust control if we do majority of the roads that have been requested through uptown.
But right now, this is probably.
But for just this location, we're looking at a couple thousand dollars.
It's something that, you know, and I can see that with the increased traffic, that that would be a reasonable expenditure. Now, this, would this be treated as like a change order to that road? Probably, or would it, would it be the road, or would it be us contracting or somebody do that?
It'd probably be us contracting, 'cause it's not a designated detour route, it has not been identified. It'd be a tough stuff.
Right, so scattered.
So, it would be, if we do any other dust control areas, we'd probably just have a contractor hit up multiple areas and do it all under one contract, or one agreement, and just do it within, uh, through the highway fund.
That way they're on-site.
Yeah.
Be a little more cost-effective.
Yeah, now, I'll stress, I apologize here, that, I'll stress everybody so there, where with dust control, if it does rain, the road will be proceeded, or be muddier, or have that muddier feel. So, that's the trade-off. We're at a dry point right now, but if we got to, a couple back-to-back storms and got an inch or two of rain, there's gonna be a period where the road may come off as slicker than normal, or muddier than normal.
I think I had a quarter of the diversion road on my car after that last rain, so yeah, I got it.
We'd like it back.
I'll put it in the bucket next time, free of you.
Yeah, so anyways, I just wanna make sure everybody is aware of that. If, if you do approve that, that's the trade-off with dust control. You get the dust down, but muddier. So what's more important, or what, what one is the lesser of the two?
I think you're dealing with more dry than wet for the summer, so I think the dust is probably a biggie.
Yeah.
So.
That was my clarification, I wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
We're gonna have the trade-off of a little bit of mud when it's wet versus.
We also.
Versus dust, so, yeah, the diversion was, was messy, and I think I had the second.
Jimmy wants it back.
I know, I'll just remember that. Come to my yard and.
If we approve this, there is no, are we, are we basically approving to, for the expenditure of dust control up to a certain dollar amount? Or how, how would we approve that, because?
I would just say, I would just say from the extent of, from where the pavement ends, to probably a hundred feet past the.
Past the.
To, yeah.
Past the first residence.
The first residence.
So basically it'd be, it would be from where the pavement would end to Drain Twenty-Seven.
Well, all the way to Drain Twenty-Seven.
Yeah. But the pavement is nine hundred feet, so that gets you quite a ways over to it, and then it's just, it's a small portion there.
I think Drain Twenty-Seven would be a good spot, 'cause that, that would at least, uh, abate the dust coming from the east or southeast wind.
It's, it would be about the length of a typical residential application in the country. A little bit past each way of the, or instead.
But again, we've got other roads too, well, Sixty-Fourth, but the contractor's gonna handle that, right? Cause that's a, that's a detour route.
That one we'll, we'll verify, but that one.
Unless it's east of Seventy.
Yeah, if it's east of Seventy, then no.
Okay, I was thinking, I got it.
I reached out to the resident on that one to clarify where exactly they're looking at. But if it is part of the detour route, then it could be under the project. But we do have other areas that.
But if it's east, I got, I wasn't thinking that right away, yeah. There might be a stretch there that we do with the residential, but residential stretch there, and not have to do the whole thing.
Well, rather than going over each one individually, we've done this for, you know, sealed caps or whatever, just like Brian said, can we just do a, what would be a budgetary number that you could use if situations came up, and if we potentially need a second application, is it?
I agree with you.
The ability to spend up to ten thousand dollars over the summer, is that enough? Is it fifteen, what?
I would say probably within fifteen would be.
Yeah, typically you won't need more than one application, maybe two applications, and you're gonna find that it has potential to cut down the blading, because it holds the road together. And that's, um, there's some cost in, in blading and maintaining the roads too, so. What we did with Wall Avenue last year was we shaped it, watered it, and then put dust control on it. So, um, that's pretty good at maintaining it for a longer period than just smearing some more gravel around it from side to side, so. Um, as far as the cost, uh, just as a, we gave, we got a dollar fifteen a gallon on the detour route for Seventy-Sixth, or the roundabout. I don't know off the top of my head what it would take for gallons to do all of, I mean, I'd have to look at the areas to see what the lengths are.
What I would think right now, if we said fifteen grand, that would cover, and if we've gotta go more, somebody will come back and have a talk with us, but I'd say fifteen grand, that would get us.
Now, that should cover.
Yep, that should cover us, getting this where.
And that would come out of the highway.
It would come from highway fund, which highway fund is adequate for it, so.
And I, I think that we should look at where to put it, versus just doing the whole thing, be creative and do it.
Be a little strategic where we put it.
Yeah, be a little conservative on this.
I think for now, let's just do small bits, approve them individually, right? That's what you're recommending right now?
My, my recommendation was go with Wall. Address Wall first, and then we could talk about the other locations later on in the agenda. So, we could do that, fifteen as an overall later in the agenda, but my recommendation would be, let's just get, handle Wall, and then we'll handle the other items.
I guess, I'm on the other side, I feel like we're micromanaging it. This is why we're talking about, you know, thousand dollars, fifteen hundred, this is, you're, you guys are the people who know what needs to be done. We give you a budget that's within definition, these aren't attached to projects, if you can attach them to a project, you guys are gonna do that. I say give you a budget to work with, and just as Cory said, if it comes back larger, then we can decide then if we're feeling it's too much.
Yeah, otherwise we're gonna have too much jabber back and forth on this, I'd say, you know, fifteen, let's get started and get this stuff done.
So to clarify, pretty much all gravel roads in the city, you wanna look, look at doing those?
No, I would say you guys are the ones that, if it's a detour.
You make strategic use for areas where.
Right, but I'm saying evaluate every gravel road, because you know that if one gets it, someone else is gonna want it too.
Yep, I know.
And it's, if you wait for someone to request it, it's gonna take tomorrow, and they're gonna do it if you approve the other ones, so.
I think when, if it has heavy traffic, that's priority.
Cause the one, like, Canal seventeen front of Road and Country Acres is what comes to my mind. It's got, holds the entire length of it, it's parallel to Canal seventeen, and it gets dusty. I mean, it's gravel road, it gets dusty.
Or do they use that as a detour?
Nope, it's not a detour, but.
So that's how we, that's how we classify this, or clarify this, the dust control is to be used for, or also would be used as a detour.
Cause Brenton mentioned West Ponderosa, West Ponderosa.
Yeah.
It's pretty much a dead end into Ponderosa.
Yeah. But those are areas where they've asked for, so.
And the same thing with Sixty-Fourth, east of the Canal seventeen, that's not an approved detour route, or a suggested detour route.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So.
I'm sure they've noticed increased traffic along Sixty-Fourth as well, I mean, people are using the minimum maintenance road to go up there and over and over that, so. That's why we're having to look at that, 'cause we haven't put dust control down on Sixty-Fourth before, I believe, on the east side.
Uh, there, the only place that the city has done dust control since two thousand and fifteen is on Wall Avenue.
Yeah, so.
My understanding is on, uh, the north half of Seventy-Second, talking with our public works staff, they said that uh, residents do get together and pay for dust control on that north half of Seventy-Second, some of those residents do get together.
I guess is it for something like that, is that you can reach out to the residents who want, and say, we're doing another area, we can get you a city price of some type, that you wanna.
Yep. Cause it'd be cheaper, obviously, if we came up and did it in bulk like that, if they wanna reimburse.
Yeah.
So do you, are you leaning more towards residents paying for it, or are you leaning more towards the city paying for it? I kinda got.
That's why you wanna go back.
We've got a lot of road projects that need to be done, I don't wanna just throw it out there as a blanket, all of a sudden, like Jim said, as soon as we throw the number out there, we're gonna get everybody asking for it. So.
What?
I, I think we, I, I agree with you, what you're saying, I like the idea of letting the staff decide where to apply it, but on the other hand, you know, we've, we've got, we've got a lot of road projects that are gonna be taking up, or are gonna continue to make, take money this year, that we should be applying funds to, so I hate to just take a portion of that, and just, all of a sudden we're taking it for dust.
My, my assumption was it was more driven for these roads that are being used sometimes as a, as a, um, detour.
I don't think it's fair to pay.
Right, if, if it's something like you stated, it's a dead end, and it's a group that's asking for it, we can benefit that either the city gets raped, or something like that, and they'd like to cover it, that's fine. But if it's something that's being used excessively because of a detour right now or something, then to me that's a different impact.
Yeah, and I mean, you could pretty much say, north of Eighty-Eighth, to the city limits on the north side, that would be construction traffic. South of Canal fourteen, shouldn't be a lot of air people driving along there. Uh, same with, uh, what's the one off of fourteen, east of, or west of, whatever that's called, I forget what it's called.
Sunset.
River, River.
Sunset.
No, it's River.
River Ben, uh.
River Bend, is it?
There's River Bend and Sunset.
Whatever, that one is one that, it's got gravel, but it wouldn't be affected by construction traffic.
Right.
So, I mean, maybe you wanna amend it to say anything north of, north of Wall, including Wall, kind of a thing. Evaluate the south ones on a case-by-case, I, I, just trying to help you delineate it.
Then let's go back to what Brian said.
Do it by area.
I, I'd almost rather do, do it individually, and then that'll give us, I mean, I hear what you're saying, I don't wanna micromanage us either, but then we need to apply common set of rules.
Right.
If you give the areas, we can use common sense and be, be conservative.
We can make, we can make the judgment all, development by development where we would apply it.
So, Eighty-Eighth north, up to Sixty-Fourth?
Well, do you have a list, Brenton, of the ones that have complained?
The, I don't, not written down, what I have is, the ones that have come up in the past few days, and then Sixty-Fourth, it's that we're trying to narrow down exactly where. If it's on the detour route, falls on the detour route, or that goes towards the project. Ponderosa, there's requests for that one. Uh, Wall Avenue, east of where the pavement is, so it was, it was really intended for that Prairie View and just going east a little bit. Um, and then Seventy-Second, those are the areas that have been, that we've received. Seventy-Second would be Country Acres, the ma, that mile-long stretch, north-south road, going through there. Runs parallel to Seventeen. But those are the roads that have been, that I've seen communications on requests from residents on, uh, consideration for dust control. So that's why we're bringing them up. The Wall one was with other pro, you know, the pavement conversation too, but if you would like us, we can bring it back next meeting, but then it's another couple weeks of no decision on dust control for those other ones.
Seventy-Second isn't Country Acres fourth, it's the, not the frontage road, but it's the one.
The back one.
Yeah, the back one, yeah.
But we could approve this one to get this down.
You could approve this one.
Wanna come back for a larger, you know, maybe that, that's a request, let's approve this for now. Recommendation, do some analysis, if we choose other roads that we would apply dust control, let's treat that as one more review next meeting. But let's get this one.
But let's get the one on Wall then.
Right, right.
Okay.
Cause this one is a detour route, and is getting hammered, so.
Yep.
Unefficient.
Eastside route. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the application of dust control to this section of Wall Avenue, or Eighty-Eighth, in the front of Terragard, the development.
Okay.
Second.
I was a flip of a coin, Dave got it, okay. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries, so then you'll.
Yeah, well, get taken care of.
Alright, so, on to the next one, the roundabout construction and alternate detours.
Okay, this has been a conversation for the past two council meetings now.
There's no document?
Nope, I don't have one on this one. Uh, since this continuation of discussion, overall, uh, the alternate detour route that is up for discussion is going, basically where Veterans Boulevard is, uh, from Wall to Sixty-Fourth. Now, there could be, there are two one-mile sections, each one, you're looking at roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to do. There are pros and cons tied to this, one, that comes out to be about three hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and fifty thousand in project cost. Uh, the north half, so Sixty-Fourth to Seventy-Sixth, that's easier sell to put into the overall project. The southern half, maybe not as much. But, the big benefit of this would be to get some connectivity going north-south. That is something the city does lack, is north-south connectivity. We have the detour road now, that actually you could go from Wall Avenue or Eighty-Eighth all the way to Fifty-Second. You might have a little bumpy ride here or there, but you could go on a gravel road that far. Before, you couldn't do that, cause the one-mile section from Seventy-Sixth to Sixty-Fourth was a minimum maintenance road, and there was no connectivity there. This would give you a two miles worth of connectivity, but it would help get residents going north and south, or give them another option if there was a time where, uh, where Canal seventeen was closed, or where they couldn't go through on that section, for some reason. It may also help with, um, granted it's a gravel road, but it would help with that access, if somebody doesn't mind driving gravel, they may have a quicker way to get to other places. Uh, I know a lot of folks are going out Wall, or Eighty-Eighth, to the frontage road along I twenty-nine, or they're going Seventy-Sixth, all the way out to I twenty-nine and up. And even before the construction was happening at Seventy-Sixth and Roundabout, they were doing that to go to places like Walmart, or that general area. So, it's a question for the council, do you want to do that road? Contractor, they've indicated that they could respond fairly quickly. Uh, I have not been able to get in touch with Fargo, their administration staff, but obviously Fargo probably wouldn't have a whole lot of problem with, I'm making an assumption here, but I don't think they would have much of a problem of horse paving a road, or putting gravel down on a minimum maintenance road that we'd be maintaining. So, we would have to probably take up more ownership in actually maintaining the road that we share boundaries, but it's, uh, it's up to the council what you wanna do. So we're just looking for a record, look and see where you stand, and get a decision made on this one.
So roughly right now, you have about four hundred and fifty thousand contingencies on that Seventy-Sixth, Seven Roundabout project. Keep adding those controlled other things on our contingency strength, and if we lob three hundred and sixty, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars off of that, it goes down even less, so.
Yeah.
Just where we're sitting with the money, and that doesn't include any construction fluctuation. Like I said with the meters, we can under-run some items, we can overrun some other, other items, but that's where, what I put in there for a contingency on the construction of that project, so.
Just a question for future, what is Fargo, or West Fargo, what are we doing with Veterans right now? They are working at south over Drain Twenty-Seven, is that more of another access for Deer Creek?
They are doing a study for Veterans Boulevard, they're doing a study, and, please, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's a study that's being proposed from MetroCog, for, to MetroCog, to evaluate that crossing of the drain.
But there's physically cooking stuff in there, aren't there?
This study has been approved, but it doesn't start until next year.
Yeah.
But Fargo, based on the diversion, they believe that they can, uh, come across Drain Twenty-Seven with culverts. Now, and therefore, they are, they are interested, it was Fargo that was pushing the study of Veterans Boulevard coming south from Fifty-Seven.
That's not what's going, then what is going on south of fifty second at Veterans right now?
Oh, they're, they're putting storm sewer in.
Storm sewer.
Underground utility.
That's all that is. No work of getting over.
Well, because the, the study hasn't been done and, and there's no dollars.
I heard somebody talking about box culverts being put in.
Yeah, that, that was the hurdle, was bridges versus boxes. And with the diversion, you can get. Box culverts installed in there for the flows versus a bridge.
Okay, so there's nothing happening.
The other thing to think about too is that that gets paved in, by twenty twenty one?
Forty fifth.
Oh, that's right, that's forty fifth.
That's forty fifth, yeah. And probably where you're thinking about the box culverts is a few weeks ago. Uh, the contractor for fifty second put box culverts in at sixty third, that north. I believe it's sixty third that, at north entrance from Deer Creek. And they had to close that entrance and all the traffic going in out Deer Creek came in on seventeen. That's probably what, I, I could be wrong, but that's probably what, that's where box culverts, I know they put some in there. But then as for closer at Veterans, I.
Okay.
That would likely be tied to the utilities.
So where, where this proposed alternate would end is at sixty fourth Avenue and Veterans and there is, to the east is nothing but a dirt road, to the north is nothing but a dirt road. And to the west is basically your only refuge out, and there is a segment of that that needs to be constructed to a gravel section that's dirt for. From whatever, drain twenty seven to that, uh, Veterans, so. You're, you will be putting more cars on sixty fourth. Dust control?
That's what it really comes down to, is where's the money gonna come from? You know, cause we don't, I don't wanna take that out of the contingency fund either.
Yeah.
Cause we got, we gotta have a little bit of wiggle room there in case we go over on something. I, I do think you're looking at, I know you get by doing one mile section, but really to make the most of it. It would be that two mile stretch, to be honest. At least that's my, my thinking of it, I too am saying.
And right now, most people are, end up going to the front of the road anyway because they're going to some other destination. Going up sixty fourth, back to Cairo seventeen, and then back east again, so you're zigzagging back and forth to get up to that area.
Yeah, some are going from seventy six, if they wanna go south, they're going seventy six to forty fifth, going south. To eighty eighth, and then south again at Veteran, where Veterans would be down to Cairo fourteen.
That section is gravel, but.
Right, right, but again, it's all staying gravel, that, that whole route is gravel, so you're either going down a hundred. Or going all the way to the front of the road and then going north, if they're going back and route.
Does the minimum maintenance roads get maintained?
No, not, not much, anything. It's a, it's a dirt path, basically.
They go so far as to put signs up to say impassable when wet.
Yeah, and they are literally impassable.
Yeah.
So you're talking about that.
You go look at them, people have tried. They're pretty rutted up right now, so. Which makes them impassable when it's dry, to be honest.
Is there any way to get them in better shape? Because if it's dry, I mean, they're, they're not bad if you wanna go.
Right, and I don't, I think it, probably it's better running a grader down there, blade.
Yeah, it is running a grader, but then you're encouraging traffic on a maintenance road and. The situations where folks can, they don't know if their gr- if the ground is dry or not, though.
And then we end up getting people stuck out there and then we're having to pay to get, yeah, it's just not ready.
You know, the pain in the ass, you have to go out and work.
Just a lot of.
There's a lot of money for, for the number of people that are being provided multiple property.
I guess right now, I'd probably say that we're gonna forego this for a while. I think we could maybe revisit it.
I mean, I think the situation has to really get dire. It's already, well, it's, it's already bad enough with, it's all it's all here.
But I think we'll.
With Doug tailing what Russ said, the roundabout opens and it's supposed to open second week in August.
That's what I mean, I'm.
And then the traffics can come this way.
I just don't wanna put any hurt on that contract by taking that money out of the contingency right now because we just don't know. So unless you guys feel differently, I think we, I would say we sit on this for a while. Maybe revisit it this fall if we wanna talk about it some more, but otherwise next year, I think we should, we can bring up the topic and just see where we're at.
Okay. I think Russ brought it up well last time, was, let's think about this in a larger plan.
Right.
What potential construction do we know coming up in the next two to three years, that type of stuff, and then we can plan.
That's what I'm thinking, next year we can maybe revisit and just see where we're at, if, if we're still in the same boat, okay.
One of the things it does is sort of opens up the whole whole plan.
I know, right, I know.
Don't do that too fast.
I hear you, Russ, no, I, I get you, so, all right, we'll move along then.
Okay.
Number nine. Okay, the next item here, uh, is a discussion of amending the utility fee structure. This would be to, uh, allow the city to charge late fees for delinquent accounts. As you recall, what we were proposing from staff level is to implement a late fee based on each utility fund. The reason behind this is because, versus doing one lump dollar amount, is because some folks have. Water and sewer, some don't have, some just have water, some have water sewer, all have trash. So there's a variety of different scenarios throughout, depending on where you live in town, if you have a septic system or not, if you pay that utility. So, that was the one reason, the other reason is because then. If there was a late fee applied to a delinquent account, we would be able, it would be very clear. This dollar amount goes to this fund, that dollar amount goes to that fund, so the pot would already be broken out.
One thing that isn't quite clear here in the, in the wording that you have, is I'm assuming that those late fees would be applied to each thirty day period.
Yes.
Right now, the way it looks is after sixty days of the, see, they're just gonna get a letter.
Yeah.
No, they're gonna get a letter and.
And it actually, it actually does stay it on the resolution.
Okay.
Uh, we uploaded the resolution here just a little bit ago, uh, but it says under for each area for late fee. Says for each thirty days late, then there'd be a fee applicable. So if you scroll to the very last page.
For each thirty days late, okay.
Yeah, so then you scroll down there and it's pretty much five dollars for trash, it's five dollars for trash. Water or sewer, vector forestry is twenty five cents, because those aren't as signi- as big of a fund in the first place. And then was, was proposed there is if the property was delinquent for more than sixty days. Uh, they would be subject to being disconnected for water. What we do is turn the water down quite a bit, you'd still get some flow, but not enough to do a whole lot, you could get enough water to drink and. Something like that, but you're not gonna be able to do much more than that with a very low flow. One area didn't have in here is if you would wanna have a disconnect tied to trash also. Yeah, so the fifty is for water, sewer you really can't disconnect. And the customer really easy on that, but if you disconnect their water, their sewer is pretty much disconnected. Uh, but for trash, if it was over sixty days delinquent, would you wanna charge a late fee for trash also?
And then again, we would, the city would be responsible for calling waste management to stop service.
Yes, the city would.
So that's where the fees come into, into play.
Just like for water, if you're disconnected, our public works staff will go out and disconnect the water, and then they'll go and reconnect.
We should approve the resolution adjusting the water rates.
Would you like to?
Utility rates for, to add.
I don't think we need one for.
If you want, okay.
I think we just start with the water.
We can see.
And then if it becomes a big problem.
Okay. Okay, so Brian makes a motion.
The late fees for garbage are here.
No, he's talking to reconnect.
Would you want to disconnect, reconnect for that? So, yeah, you'd just get late fees tacked on, so. Yeah, we'll see if it becomes an issue or not. Okay, so Brian made a motion.
We should approve the resolution.
On second one.
Okay, Dave does the second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Lucas, you got the next one.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, the first item I have is, um, declaration of official intent. What this document says is that if the city spends any money out of its general fund, that'll reimburse itself. With the bonding, and the city will not spend funds in excess of that amount right there. And so for, for each one of these, in section four, the numbers calculated just by adding twenty percent to the engineers' estimate cost of the project. And this is just a requirement from the IRS for when you're doing bonding for these projects.
So why is this specific twenty twenty one, why, why is this, why is, we're just adding this as an addendum to the current project?
You'll have them for all the projects.
Yeah.
That, that, that's true for all going forward, right? Or is this just a, an addendum to the agreement for all new developers going forward?
This is part of the improvement district, so it's basically another one of the resolutions that the city does.
Right, so we're, we're gonna, I mean, we're doing this right now for this project, but we'll have a, a updated resolution in a future meeting. That basically adds this language to every fut- any future projects?
It'll just be included in the res- project resolutions.
Okay, all right, so that, that's what I mean, it's, we're doing this one time because it's a new regulation that we have to put in, that we have to meet, right?
We've done it in the past.
Oh.
Is it separate? Cause I, I agree with Brian, I don't remember doing a declaration.
Okay, so it's something, okay, all right. That, that's why it was unclear why it's called out for this specific project. Cause it seemed like something new.
But in the future, is it something that was in, in, um, in a certain, in, included in a certain step? Or will this now be a separate step in every project?
Separate step in every project.
Okay.
So there's no real cost associated with this? It's just contingency kind of?
Yeah, it's just kind of a.
Okay.
I was told by, on council to start doing this.
Okay, do you have any questions? Accept the motion.
Motion to approve the declaration of official intent.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, it's a second.
Second.
Brian does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great, motion carries to number eleven. Lucas, I assume you've got most of these coming up here still.
Yep, uh, so the next one is a resolution determining not sufficient protest or received, uh, for this project. The city did the resolution assessment paper, nobody protested the project, so now it's again, one of the formalities of throughout your. Or with your resolutions that you need to have this one done. So it's just saying that, that no one protested the project, there was nothing filed with the city either. Protesting the project.
Can I ask a question about protests like in this example, this is specific to seventy six and the roundabout, right? The only people that can protest are the people that are potentially impacted in the red, in the district, right, that get it fined, okay.
But it would probably only take one because just the size of the land, right?
The district was set.
For this one was very big, but for others it's own.
A handful of landowners in that city area.
City limits.
This one we made the city.
For the seventy six roundabout, it was for the entire city.
The, the current district map was.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
The boundary map.
I see what you mean, okay.
That's why you have to approve the district boundary.
Any other questions?
So again, all this one is saying is that nobody had protested this project.
Just basically acknowledging that, we need to make a motion.
Motion, we approve the resolution determining not sufficient protest received.
Dave makes a motion. Brian does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Declaration of intent, I'm assuming it's the same field.
Yep, and again, this is just twenty percent above what the engineers estimate the project costs are.
Motion to approve the declaration of official intent for project twenty nineteen dash two.
Okay, Brian makes a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries on to number twelve, Lucas.
Uh, again, this resolution is saying that protests were not filed for, uh, storm sewer and street improvement district twenty nineteen dash three. Sixty third street and eighty first avenue.
So, I guess, trying to get to what Brian said, so in this example, we have a very defined area. And a lot of it's farmland land that, let's say, was owned by one person. So, that, how would that one person, if they protested it, but with the, say there was only five or six owners then in the hole?
They have the majority of the land.
So they could, that one person could probably stop a protest, right?
Or you can try to piece it, where there's, you can just take a portion of, like this project is pretty limited into what.
They own most of it anyways, right, cause they bought it.
Same, the landlord was asked for it, as I recall.
In this one, because it was.
Uh, the school and then the adjacent developer.
Yeah, right.
All right, accept the motion.
Motion to approve the resolution of intent, no, of insufficient process.
There you go, okay. Brian makes a motion.
Second.
Does a second on that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
The next one is the declaration of official intent for this one.
Motion to approve the declaration of intent on project twenty nineteen dash three.
Second.
Okay, it does a second. Brian does a first. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, we're on to the other one, number thirteen.
Mr. Mayor, can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Um, when we approve these, what is the typical timing again to get, whether temporary bonds, final bonds, what is the typical amount of time it takes to get the bonds? Or get to the money?
It de- depends on the project size. The reason that this round is taking so long is the size of the request. If you exceed ten million dollars, it's no longer a bank certified bond, um, so it gets harder for the city to try to sell those bonds. So then the city has to provide more information, um, how many lots are sold, how many lots are developed. Uh, what's this project for, who's the developer, who's paying for the costs, and so to provide all that information, they try to wrap it up on, let, make it look nice. So people actually buy it. Um, and so what's going on with this temporary one is there's currently five projects. That are included in it, and so it's quite a bit of money that.
So we're doing one potential temporary bond for all of the projects?
It's gonna have to end up being two because you're gonna have new developments too that are coming on.
Okay.
Now after the fact. Um, so I think there's only gonna be four projects in this initial round, and then two or three developments in the next round.
And this is nothing new, this is such as a Fargo or West Fargo, when they are putting all the projects, they go get. Bonds across multiple projects at a time, right?
It's, it's supposed to save you the bond costs.
Correct, correct, the administrative.
What, I, I'd like to add, what is new is to horse is using the approach of temporary bond. And then leading to the permanent bond, cause historically horse would just do a permanent bond and base it on estimate. So this is an effort to help bond tr- when we do the permanent financing, the permanent bond. It's an effort to help make sure that what is bonded is truly the project costs or the total cost plus the different fees tied there. Uh, of it, so that way there isn't a, a extra really staying in the fund, or not much staying in the fund, so.
Oh, so, I guess a question that extended, but is a four to six week period, is that typical, or is it less than that? Longer than that?
We've been working on this one for.
A while now.
A long time.
Okay.
I provided the numbers to Dordie. About two months ago.
I was gonna say, was it January we were starting to have some of these initial conversations?
Yeah, the discussions were started there, but there's been just a lot of changes in what projects were included, the concrete.
All right, thanks.
Okay, it's on to thirteen then.
So the first one is the resolution declaring petition for improvements was received. So this is, this is different where the city doesn't have to do the resolution of necessity. Because the developer here is requesting that the city do the improvements, so that's what this document is saying, is that the developer wants. Uh, the city to install the improvements and then to avoid the protest period, so this is for, uh, Vista Industrial. So, that petition was received in October of twenty eighteen.
Move, we approve the resolution declaring petition for improvement?
Okay, this motion will be, is a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Why does it say that there's local hold?
What's that?
If you're all in favor, you don't have to do a local hold.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay, so then uh declaration of official intent with the same-
So, I posed this question to the council, I'm not sure if we want to proceed with the next two, because we still not received a, not correct, we received the improvement district. And so I think we have to, cause we haven't, we haven't gotten the letter of credit either, and I don't want the city to-
No, not if we haven't gotten the letter of credit, so.
Yeah, we sent the developer, the the ID and the um request for letter of credit, and we've been in contact with the developer, we just don't have other ones yet, so.
Should we just table it and bring it up next meeting? Would that be enough time?
Yeah, yeah, we can table it for two weeks.
Okay, why don't we do that, then we'll table B and C for two weeks?
We can, for C?
Yeah, we can hold them for thirty days.
How long has it been though? When was the bids for this?
Today.
Oh, it's just today?
One o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, I I was just thinking maybe this was something that you've been holding for a week or two.
No, 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 this was middle of one o'clock.
Okay.
The developer hasn't said he has any issues or anything besides, just not sure.
Have we, have we?
He's told me the same thing too. I mean, we've spoken on the phone both to the developer and the developer.
I know, but have we communicated the time sensitivity of this? Cause with the way projects are going in the city, we go over thirty days, those bids are nothing. I mean, everybody understands that, right? Clear cut.
Yep.
This developer's not gonna come back and go.
We have been trying to get that developer screen in for three weeks now.
Less than that, in two weeks.
Two weeks at least.
Right, cause these contractors are gonna wanna move on to other work or whatever, if we can't get it awarded, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
But, it's on the developer.
Yep.
It's his responsibility to make that happen, so.
No, but I wanna make sure we've clearly, clearly communicated the urgency and the expectation.
Alright.
Thank you.
So move on to fourteen.
Yep, okay, so fourteen A, um, resolution declaring petition for improvements received. Again, the city received uh this petition. Developers petitioning the city to construct improvements. This was received in uh April, I believe. And again, this avoids the necessity for doing the resolution of necessity.
Motion to approve the said resolution.
Okay, Brian does a motion, can he get a second?
Second.
Okay, he does a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Alright, motion carries declaration of official intent.
Um, with these next three items, I would like to to table those to the next meeting.
We're still waiting on the upper documentation.
Yeah.
They do have the plans and specs, are saying it's complete. Um, we have been working with the developer on that, but it's up to the council what we wanna do.
If it delays two weeks, it is gonna put-
Well, there have been quite a few delays.
Right.
So, on this one.
This isn't-
But it's all on the developer, the delays are-
That's what I mean.
From the developer, not the city.
Just as long as we are clear with them, like as Dave mentioned, that it's on them to get the documentation to us and-
Correct.
We're not pulling them up, so we don't want that accusation, so, alright, so we'll table, rest it out.
Alright.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to fifteen then. Matt, that's you, are you rezone?
Between the preliminary and final plat of Cub Creek, additional lot was added. It's lot twenty-two and block one. Uh, that just needs to be rezoned, so the record reflects that it's zone R six with the rest of the residential lots. Cub Creek, this would be, planning commission recommended approval, that rezone, this will be the first uh reading for you guys on that.
So is that something that got uh added in later, or we logged that one up?
Can you point, can you point it out?
Yeah, if you zoom in, it's um-
It's a corner lot.
It's the first-
The very top row.
Yeah.
The very top row of lots.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yep, and I'll go over, all the way over.
Well, no, that-
Well, that's what you added.
To add the lot that added, which caused the renumber, uh, that lot was already, was always there at the preliminary plat, I asked them why that was there, and they were thinking they were gonna use that as access to that big possible commercial area above it, which didn't make sense then, and it doesn't make sense now, so they, they formed that into a lot.
Okay.
But because they, they only had, they had twenty-one lots there, you have to give a number of each one of them, so they had to add a lot. And that first, that first one wasn't zoned R six, it was still part of the block above it, which is-
So it's just part of agriculture at this point?
Yeah, agriculture, so they had, so they had to do that, and and I think they were pulled out to do this again.
Typically, I get on this between the changes of preliminary and the final, and this didn't happen to be on that list, which happens, it's not, I don't think it's a problem, we're just facing it now, so.
Alright, so nothing else changed in any other, no drawings?
Nope.
For the preliminary plat?
Alright, so, I'll open it up for public hearing, if anybody's got any comments or if they wanna make about the rezone. Going once, going twice. Okay, now close the public hearing.
So you say motion approved?
Yes, this is your first reading. It's an ordinance.
Okay, so.
Motion to approve the first reading of the rezone.
Okay, Brian makes a motion.
Aye.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, motion passes. Brett and Lucas, you got the next one. Oh, that's right, utility agreement, we'll wind up with that.
Okay, utility agreements, what we found out, uh, these are the utility agreements proposed to council last meeting. Uh, they are not exempt from the county's practice of not paying, uh, because what it is, is moving the utility out of the existing, or what was the previous right, or within seventy-five feet of center line, uh, beyond that. So there's new right of way that's being purchased, it's moving those utilities into that new right of way, it's moving them out of the way. That is why they are asking for the cost of the relocation. Uh, that was getting, they're gaining more clarification with the county and how their practice is, but their practice is within seventy-five feet of center line in their direction. They won't cover costs of relocation, that's on the utility company, anything after that, then it is, the city does not.
So you're saying because the right of way is more than seventy, the new right of way is more than seventy-five feet?
Because we're asking, they're, they were in the right of way.
Right, right.
But they're being asked to move into the new right of way.
Which is more than seventy-five feet from the current one.
Yes.
You're saying, yeah, we have to pay.
That is my understanding of the situation, is that they're being asked to move outside of what was existing. This, the new, or outside of that seventy-five feet that they're covered under.
So in essence, they will have to pay fifteen thousand dollars.
We would, as part of the project.
Oh.
We would have fifteen thousand for that one.
So we have to pay this amount to them?
As part of the project, yes.
Project, the project.
It would be a project cost, it would be a project cost.
Right.
So it's, that's the nature of these.
So this comes down to the contingency?
Well, it's factor within the project. It would be a contingency. It would be in the contingency.
Cause it was not included.
Yeah.
We didn't think we were gonna have to pay.
Who are they saying directed them to move them? Or is it just a convenience on their part? They didn't say. I'm sure, okay. I was just curious, cause- Yeah. If you read that, it says column consolidated is being required to relocate some of our existing utilities. I'm just curious.
So if they don't, are these like utilities potentially-
If they don't, if they, if they, if we don't- That's what I'm curious about. Like, if they're just moving it five feet, just for the sake of moving it five feet.
Well, that's what I'm wondering, I mean, is this something that we would be required?
I'm assuming it's not. I'm assuming it's more than that, cause fifteen thousand is a pretty good amount of money for relocating utilities, so it's more involved than that, but I just, just curious.
Did they, did they provide this number, or did we?
No, it was provided by the utility.
That is, that is pretty, that's a high dollar amount for-
They were rebored all, all along the north side of seventy-six.
Yep, yep. And part of that was because they would be under the fronted road, the paved fronted road, so. That was a bit cool, I remember right.
But it's, there again, do we have to pay this, or should they?
If we don't, the county is going to take care of it, they're going to move forward with-
Paying this.
This, and then they'll probably come back and ask us still to pay it.
So it's gonna come back, what's going on?
I would assume it would be. Or it'd be coming, you know, yeah, or come out of that. So, yeah, something to keep in mind is, they gave a million dollars towards this project, the county did, towards the roundabout. So, this is something that if-
Asking for twelve-five.
If it wasn't approved, this would hold up the project. Would utilities ideally be, this phase be handled a lot sooner? Yeah, it would, but we also ideally wouldn't have a project this caliber moving the speed it is. So typically, these size projects take a little longer to do.
Well, I guess I have a concern that you all were, that you guys said you were in a meeting with all utilities to coordinate this.
Mm-hmm.
Did that statement come up by somebody, you're asking me to move these utilities?
We gave, we gave on my deadline saying if you had any of these requests, you had to give it to us by a certain time, if they didn't, it wasn't going to be considered.
So it was in that timeframe?
They, they were in that timeframe, it was one of our first pre, or weekly construction meetings, we told the utility companies. Cause we got one of the, or one of the, them was received, and we said if you don't have any others by a certain time, which was right before the last council meeting, then we wouldn't consider it, cause that was their opportunity to speak. And these are only two that we've received, so, should we have any others? No, we shouldn't. Can I guarantee that we won't? No, I can't, but.
Yeah, but we should know about them, because they're doing utility work, right?
Odds are, if we have any others that pop up, it's because something was hit, or-
Oh shit.
Or there's something that was found or discovered when they're doing excavation or something that wasn't known.
Okay.
Well, what do you guys think?
I don't think to a point we have a choice, yeah.
Alright, it's gonna come back to us either way.
It's part of the project.
It's gonna come back to us either way, so.
It's part of the project, yes.
I'm on motion to approve the utility agreements.
I'll second that.
Chelsea's a motion, Dave is a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, she made the rest one, so. Opened period, so. Okay, economic development, please, Brian, we got that one.
Okay, I'm gonna tag team this with Matt, cause I'm kinda having Matt take quite a bit of lead on this committee.
Yeah.
Uh, but, just, we've, we've touched base briefly on this, on and off, probably within the last four to six months. Uh, the thought of doing economic development committee, uh, part of what will push the startup of this, we've been working with A two S uh, about getting the framework set up for this type of committee, uh, also helping identify what skill sets would be helpful to this committee or beneficial to the city, so, we wanna make sure that everybody that's coming to the table can really help move the economic development. Uh, so, we've been working with, like I said, A two S, our staff to identify different individuals that could be on this committee, they would likely need to be appointed, so that's where, you know, Matt will get into in a second too. Uh, but it would be an actual committee, this would serve a very similar capacity, in a sense, I'm paraphrasing it quite a bit. Like the interaction the city council has with the planning commission. The planning commission reviews things like related to planning zoning, makes recommendations to the council for consideration. That's where this economic development committee can really give some guidance, look deeper into those economic development initiatives or efforts, and then give a recommendation to the council beyond just what staff can. And what that does is also gives you another perspective of individuals that are either business owners, uh, been successful in their careers of different types of things, nonprofits or medical field, or uh, just a wide variety of different points of views, and most of those residents have a tie, or pretty much all those, all those folks have a tie to the community in some fashion, so, they explain them.
Well, yes, since economic development is such a broad topic, it can range from business incentives and recruitment to, you know, making lawns look nicer and driving up property values, and there's so many things that it means, uh, it's important that this group uh, has ownership over what they are. And so the first meeting really is, is kinda to make sure everybody that has been asked to be part of this um, is all on the same page, and and everybody's kind of in agreement on the next steps that they're gonna have to take to take ownership of the group and and really build this from the start. That meeting will be Wednesday, June twelfth. Um, one, we've heard back, we only heard back from one member, and unfortunately he'll be on vacation, but he's here today, so that's good. And I, it's, it's, I think it's exciting for the city that the um, will be able to start. We're in a position where we could really start building things from the ground floor and doing it in a, in a timeline that produces, you know, good results. Cause there's no rush to get this done, we wanna make sure that's done the right way, and having the group take ownership of their own charter essentially is very important to this, so.
How many potential people will be on this committee?
We have five, right now. Um, there's nothing to say that uh council members won't be involved, I know Chelsea is and has been involved through the interview process. Right now the members are Kathy Olson, Ron Erickson, Nikki Berglund, Sherry Eno, and Tom Kenville. Uh, we've identified some alternates, um, but we're gonna move with uh just five to start, so.
And the intention would be get the group started, and then they could expand later on as, after, if kinda solidified the direction and councils interact with them a little bit too.
And right now they've been, have, they have some funding available to them, right, because of the sales tax they have to fund. A, a pool of money that can fund some of the activities and so forth, so, okay.
Yeah, this group can do many things, from recommending where certain types of funding go, to making recommendations to council about incentives, to planning events. I mean, this can go so many directions, and the direction, it's gotta go the direction the public wants, so, that's why it's important to move this step by step.
Well, I think number one would just be communication that this, that we have a economic development, right, initiative started. It'd be good to, to let the community know that this is, this is getting underway, so that people can realize that they have a group that they can reach out to. So if there's some resources, either communication, or whatever they're gonna need to, to make them functional, you know, they need to reach out to us to, to help in any way that we can to keep that, cause we want this to, we want them to be able to set up a program, not just a collection of people that just kinda get together and do nothing, or, you know, make a decision and just for that meeting, we want them to be setting the path for the future, right?
Right.
So, that would be, what, what, that would maybe be one goal that I would like them to consider for early meeting, is to say what are some of those resources that they're gonna need from the city to help them be successful.
Okay.
But you, have you kinda drafted a charter, so to speak, for them in, in terms of setting, you know, what, what that goal would be, or are you gonna ask them to draft that charter for themselves?
My plan would be to present a couple examples from other communities in the region that have done this, and give them the opportunity to comment on that, and, and really let them scope what it is. Cause I don't, I think if we don't do that, you know, we may not get the best types of recommendations, because this is a diverse range of talent that's on this board, so.
So, my second, I guess, I'm just throwing things out here.
Well, I, mine is, mine is the charter, is, just as you said, it can be too broad, and I'd really like to see it very defined with objectives and the goals, so that they can be focused and get things done versus we get, oh, something over here is pulling them versus over here and they're not totally related, it's, what is the focus?
You can step it through too, where you got this initial focus and then-
Sure.
That will morph, we know that, that'll morph.
But keep it concise and focused on what you're trying to accomplish.
Where the staff comes in and staff says, we want X, Y, and Z out of the group, and then what has happened is, you have one or two people in the group that are experts in X, Y, and Z. And the rest of the people are just kinda there, you know, but they have talent that should be unlocked too, and they're on the committee for a reason, so.
And let the group kinda decide what they feel is maybe the priority.
Yep, but I mean, it's important for them to state what that charter is, what they think their priorities are, and then, you know, cause I would like-
Well organized.
For them to be communicating to us, maybe some of their initiatives and, and goals periodically, whether it's quarterly or something. You know, either have somebody come present to the council to just give an update quarterly, uh, and then, you know, maybe publishing either on the website or some other mechanism on activities- Uh, and then, you know, maybe publishing either on the website or some other mechanism on activities and work that they've been accomplishing. Right, just some sort of status for the city and residents that realizing, hey, we're funding these guys, but here's what they're accomplishing with that.
I guess I would, you know, I want them to give the feedback, but I also think we as a city, not us as a council, but we as a city should be helping direct a little of that. Cause we don't wanna get too many obscure things, but of course there can be ideas that can be fantastic too.
I think we can just begin to.
Yep, define the scope and, and let them go.
I don't wanna get so revealing ourselves. Do scope and get it figured out.
No, I, I think it's fantastic, thank you for leading this, I, we've, we've been talking about this for a long time, so. This is gonna help focus that effort and hopefully be a catalyst for bringing more businesses to this community.
Did you state you have a discussion and action, so what's the action we need to do? Or is there an action?
I don't have an action for this.
We did have on there, we weren't gonna have the appointments occur, uh, tonight, but what we're gonna do is have that first meeting.
Okay.
And make sure that that group is comfortable if they really wanna be involved with this or not.
Okay.
And then if they are, those members or those individuals, then ask for an appointment from there. We'll wait till after. Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Alright, so onto number eighteen.
Cause the flash drive was eighteen too.
Okay. Brian.
And that's you.
Well, I'll introduce really quick, we have Andrea Bo and Heather Seiberson, uh, with A two S. They've been working closely with staff, Councilwoman Johnson and I on community branding. Uh, helping us obviously with partners marketing grant, economic development committee. And what they're gonna have for you today is a discussion on what we've been going through. And then also one of the more exciting things is potential logo to consider for the city, so. Just give you heads up. He's set the point at him.
You remember I brought a clicker to my interview? I think it's at home though, so.
Okay, while I was, you were pulling that up, I'm really excited to be here to unveil the, the brand and potential logos. It's been a great journey and very thankful for Councilwoman Johnson and Brent and Matt. And actually Lacey Perkins was also on the core team going through the process with us to sell those. It's a fun process and Heather Seiberson's here and she's gonna be keeping me in line to make sure I don't miss any points of the process. But she's also gonna serve as ban weight to me too, so. So I'm pointing at you now. Um, so I always like to put this slide in and start with this slide because, um, when you say brand, most people think logo. And the reality is that a brand is very much more than a logo, right? The logo is a visual identity of your brand, but a brand is really the culture, the personality. The, the feelings you have when you step into a community, so there's kinda this nuance with community branding. It's, it's much more than a logo, so if you wanna go ahead. For this particular project, we wanted to make sure that we really discovered the word, your identity, your purpose. We wanted to clearly communicate the community, we wanted to make sure it was different than your neighboring communities or regional communities for that matter. Um, it was gonna be designed for many departments, so we wanted to make sure that it had this overarching brand. And then ultimately it would support whatever strategic plans you had in the future. So I touched on this a little bit before, but why is community branding so important and why is it important to be authentic? The reality is your residents, your citizens have to identify with that brand because you're, they're your unofficial spokespeople. Whether you like it or not, right? So they have to feel that this brand is truly representative of them. And so it's important to get their input in the process. So this is a little bit of outer process, it's hard to see, it's small, but, um, the first thing we like to do is a community survey. You happen to be going, uh, through a comp planning process at the same time. So rather than do two community surveys that were gonna be asking somewhat similar questions or overlapping. We didn't wanna have, um, survey fatigue, if you will, from too many surveys. So we worked with the consultant that was doing the comp plan and asked if we could piggyback on their survey as well. And they were very gracious in allowing us to add some questions to their survey and share the survey data with us. So we had all that data, um, from that. And then we interviewed the economic advisory committees, so Ron and the others that were mentioned earlier. We interviewed them, got their perspectives on the community as well. What we do from there is take all that data and we put it in the three P's. So that's people, place, and personality. It just, um, after doing community branding for such a long time, you find these little nuances through it. And we found that you pretty much can place it in those three P's. And so from there we start developing the themes and the brand. And our team came up with about seven or eight themes. We brought them forth to the core committee, reviewed them, narrowed them down to three themes. And then add some design to those three themes and then we met back together, narrowed them down. And it really won rose to the top and so we focused on that theme and now we're working on the designs, narrowing down the designs for that theme. And then we'll create a palette and, and consistency guide as we wrap that up. And those are the three P's I'm talking about, so from the survey, this is really what your residents said. This is not our perception, this is straight from your residents taking that survey. And really those are the traits of the personality, the place, and the people. And so that's what we looked at to develop the theme. And as we're working through that, you usually need some connectors, so if you want to go to the next slide.
Were these actually words that came from the survey?
Yes.
I, I just find the non-diverse background, I, I, that one just caught my eye, the people. Like it, it's the truth, you know, it's a hearty people, but a non-diverse background, I, yeah, that's an interesting observation.
So these are the connector words, I call them connector words because these are the phrases that kind of bubble up from our team looking at it. You know, we're connecting those people with the places and these start, start forming the themes. And so these were the connector words that we came up with to add to those, those three P's. So if you wanna go to the next one. So really what came out of it was this theme that rose to the top, Horus, horizons expand here. And really what's so great about this theme is that it speaks to the people that have lived here for a long time and all that have moved up here, right? You, you're moving a little bit out of the city, you're close to a metro area, but you have space and horizons in front of you. But it also speaks to the growth that you're experiencing, so there's a lot of opportunities. Your horizons are endless here in Horus. Uh, and then, you know, two, it speaks to the families and kids with the new schools are gonna be experiencing. Um, young, young kids have great horizons and opportunities ahead of them growing up here. So this is one that really spoke to the core committee. We tested it on informal focus groups and it really, it rose to the top. So this is the one that we went with and started to design around. And this is just a little bit more about that horizon rose to the top. Um, we started choosing the color palette. When we did that, we looked at some of the colors around the community. Um, we also talked about the school colors, um, we have that old gold that's fused around here. So incorporating some of those same palette colors as we go towards design. And then we will start flipping over again. So, so we did plenty of, uh, designs, logo designs. And just as recently as this morning, we were doing tweets on it. So really, uh, that logo is, it's somewhat literal, I guess, of a horizon, but it's got the green of the space. There's a blue sliver in it that stands for the river, uh, that runs through Horus. And then obviously the H is very distinctive. We wanted to make sure when we design logos for communities, you can think of all the different things that are gonna be on, they're gonna be on. Everything from T-shirt to a water tower, so it's gotta be extremely visible, crisp. Um, and those, and again, incorporated that whole color. Did I miss anything? No, that's, that's the color that we selected that is more, is the logo. Yeah.
There's actually two kind of gold, there's a darker gold and a lighter gold, right?
Yeah.
And I guess it would, how did that play into, the, 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 it's like the right side is the darker gold, was there a thought process behind that or?
It was adding some dimension to it, so it wasn't such a flat gold. So it was, instead of adding a shadow, because you really don't wanna add a shadow on logos when you start doing reproduction and some digital. It gets a little messy, so it was another way to add some dimension, so it wasn't so flat.
It, it's interesting because I, my first thought when I saw this, the two colors was the Scandinavian, the French side was. Great. That was my, I don't know why, but that was my first thought when I saw the two colors, so.
That was not the intention, but.
Okay, right.
Um, yeah, we'll go on towards it.
So these are just variations of, of that same logo, okay?
Yep, just show on. This is the second one and this is a, it's a cleaner version with just the gold and the accent color of the blue. You can see it still has that horizon look to it, but it's got a pointed, uh, a point to it to denote like homes. Uh, it's a home place and then again the H, we wanna make sure that we use the H. That was something that came out of our discussions with the core team as they really want to see that H. So it's neat, it was distinctive, the Horus. And then if we wanna go into the third option.
Yeah, that's actually pretty cool to be able to see that and how it would look, it's great.
And this is one that ended up being a combination of the first two. There was some discussion that they liked the green and the blue and having that representation of the land. But just having a little crisper look to the, to the sunrise, I guess. So, um, it's really a combination of the first two.
It's like a patterning, a patterning out as well as coming in, so.
Yeah.
And this, this indicates more of a sunset or sunrise, so to speak, than the first one.
Right.
I like the idea of having that green and blue, cause this one, the blue is actually a little more prominent, you see it a little bit more.
Mm-hmm. Some more on this one, the far one.
Right.
Yep.
Right, number three.
Mm-hmm.
That's, I don't know if it's just the color, how it printed out, but I don't know if it's just darker, but the black and white, I'm looking at the black and white. Version of the, the upper, the far upper right corner, it's just, is that just, was that intentional or is that?
Yeah, you know, the grayscale, we can play around with, that was literally just.
So if that just looks like it would pop more and you were printing it in black and white.
Yeah.
And the logo one, letterhead or something else that where it needed to be black and white. But there again, that, we could do that, either of them or. This one just looks better just because it's a more color contrast.
Talking number three.
Oh, number three, right, right, I'm talking number three, yeah.
Um, I guess I'll say maybe a little bit about what I thought. So originally when I saw the third one, I really liked it, but then I kinda went back to the first one. Because I, I really, and I think Matt and I talked about this a little bit, Matt brought it up, but the circles are softer, it's not as aggressive. Um, and the third one, to me, it looked, it just kinda reminds me of breakfast a little bit more. The first one is maybe a little bit more creative and, and original, I guess. So that was my, my thought, I like the first one.
You feel like the number one is a little softer.
Yeah, softer edges, not so, maybe a little less aggressive looking with the, without the arrows. Um, and then just also a little bit more unique, you know, it's just got something really creative with the circles.
Yeah, dude.
I like the third one, my only, which I, the second one, I like the emphasis on just the word Horus. Versus City of all being the same size. You see a Fargo truck, you see West Fargo truck, the emphasis is on the word Fargo or West Fargo, they all say City of somewhere. I like that it just says Horus and I, I do like the sunrise, I feel the circles.
I do agree with the idea, I do like the idea of just having Horus here instead of City of.
No, I would concur.
Or just make a smaller case like this number two.
Yeah, however, however, yeah, I just like the emphasis on the word Horus versus all City of being the same.
Cause the Horus, all three of those are the same font, right? It's just that Horus is larger font in that, in the middle one.
I think you did it because if you're looking at the proportions, I suppose, of, you know, all that kinda stuff.
Right.
I do like the styling of the third one, I think better the, the circles.
I kinda think you're asking.
Circles, that was weird, but then you get a look at it a little bit, so.
Yeah, you've been looking at it quite a bit.
I know, you've, you've done it a lot, I'm sure. Yeah.
Yeah.
The first grabbing is the, the like the sunrise kinda look and.
And to you, to you Chelsea, what, what do the circles represent? I mean, is it still that?
I think it has more whimsy and like, um, just more lighthearted and fun, softer, more welcoming maybe.
Snowman.
What?
Looks like a snowman.
I mean, the sun is, it's more, it's just more typical, like you, it just doesn't look as creative, I think, with the standard sunbeams.
I think it's just during the meeting that it wasn't so literal.
Say it again?
It's not so literal.
Yeah.
A little bit more abstract. That was what she liked about it. We had, this is probably the fifth round, fifth or sixth round of, of designs. And we had some that were very abstract. And really I think the group said, you know, we don't wanna go too abstract, we really wanna have just a strong emphasis on horizon. And so these were the strongest emphasis and that the circles were that little whimsy or being a little abstract.
I guess if you say, what was our tagline again, the horizons expand here. And this is said at our work the other day, as Bockhead is now sixty years old and our CEO said. This is the start of the next sixty years of our company. So to me with a sunrise, that feels like the start of the next hundred and some years of Horus North Dakota.
Mm-hmm.
Even though you can see the sunrise now that you mentioned it, the circles and what, you know.
That's what I was gonna say, so which one of those represents the sunrise?
I like the sunrise, I'm the third, so, but yeah.
Okay, let's.
Once you mention it, you can see it.
Yeah. Matt, I mean, what, I guess I didn't really hear what Lacey and Brent thought of these three.
I've been more impartial or, you know, go with either, any of them for the staff. Uh, I think my own personal, I would say even the middle one, just cause it's pretty, you know, pretty cut and dry. Here's what it is, here's Horus and.
I, I like the, I like.
I, I think it'd be easier to stand out.
I think Lacey picked this one as her top and then that'll, and like, I mean. Yeah, I think she liked the idea of having two more colors in a logo to play with in terms of graphic design.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, I do like number three. Do like number three, I, I, I did suggest an offer to change the, the font to the, to number two. Cause making Horus stand out more as a word and downplaying the City of.
Yep, right, I agree.
So what do you guys think of the angled blue? Cause I, I mean, I kinda like it straight, it's supposed to be the horizon and the river, whereas when it's angled, it doesn't, you know, it's.
It's just a blue block, right?
I mean, I don't know if that blue could be straight and maybe come inwards a little bit, maybe not.
Cause that one would represent the river concept, right?
Yeah.
A bit more than here.
Yeah, I feel like when you say it's a river, that makes more sense than when it's angled, but.
Well, those are all little, you know, things we can play with. You know, if you had to say which one you prefer in terms of, you know, big design, what, what would it be?
I would say it's third.
I know where she's coming from, but I'm kinda with the third as well, just because.
Well, I think, to me, the, the blue popped a little bit more.
Right.
Right.
On the third one, so you saw it more, but I, I agree with you, Chelsea, I do like the idea that make it a little more representative. Because that was my first thought, with the first one was, yes, it is representative of the river.
Right, that's, but as far as a base template, I was thinking three, with the tweaks that we were kind of talking about.
Oh, that's cool.
Then when you do this next time, I want Matt to be the guy going. Be that guy.
I'm going on vacation in a couple weeks here. Is there, is there more public input? I mean, is there, are there gonna be another opportunity for getting feedback? Once we, I mean, is there gonna be another round of, you know, okay, we make some final tweaks, get more feedback as in public? Or is it pretty much just us making that decision?
I think it's really that core team and the focus groups that give the input.
Well, so you do still have some focus groups that are, with the economic development and the internal staff, okay.
But, you know, as in terms of schedule and process, this is part of the Partners in Marketing Grant, and we have to wrap everything up and submit our, our final report by June thirtieth. To ask for it by June thirtieth, so we're working towards that schedule.
I think that's really gonna look awesome on like a water tower, then just that concept, and then putting the horse. That's a beautiful logo to put up on something like.
Well, there's multiple tie-ins to, I mean, think of the Horizon School, right? Because once we're about the Horizon Middle School, right? We've got, Microsoft has a Horizon campus, Horizon building in the campus, so there, there's multiple Horizon names, place names that are already being used in the community. So, you know, it does tie into multiple of them. That's pretty cool.
Well, we will take the notes that you gave us, and we'll make some tweaks, and we'll bring that back to the core group. Um, the next steps are, um, do you want to forward?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. I'm pointing at you.
He's not paying attention.
I'm sleeping at the switch.
There's one before that.
I got creative juices thing going, and I'm thinking about this, oh, one, oh, is there something?
Oh, you have to be on now.
Yeah, there was, there was one back.
There's one more after the end?
Uh, there was one more before the end. Oh, it's blank.
Oh, does it build, hang on. Okay, let me go here.
It's Russell's snowman.
It's a blizzard.
Well, I think what that slide said to me is the next steps were, you know, adhering to that schedule. Um, we will make those tweaks, and we'll also do a couple variations. So, you know, you can see it horizontal or vertical, depending on the spacing you want to put it on. So if it just has to say Horus, you have that, how it's gonna look vertically. Um, we'll play with the grayscale, those type of things, just so we have a couple different variations for you to use. And then we'll finish this up and do the consistency guide, so Lacy has a consistency guide to use.
Is there supposed to be a video or something?
Nope, it was just a slide, I don't know what happened.
It's all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Andrea.
Wow.
That's cool.
Yeah, I think that's a little better than I was trying.
All right. Anything else you need to say on that, or?
Nope.
Pretty much got that squared away.
We'll, we'll come back in the next council meeting.
Yeah, that's fine.
Uh, due to our timeline and everything with that grant, we'll be coming back next council meeting. Uh, also, we're working on, uh, in regards to using up the rest of the grant. Uh, there'll be branding activities that are.
Sure.
Promote, promoting the city, things like that throughout the year, which I believe we're able to prepay for that type of grant, so.
Well, good, thanks for bringing that out here tonight, that's great. So, all right, Jim, engineering, what do we got?
All right, Mr. Mayor of Council, we'll start with just some of the projects that are going on around Town Natera Gardens. Like we said, they're gonna start paving tomorrow, they've been working on concrete since last Friday. Carbon gutter sidewalks and shared use path through the park area. All the gravel base has been hauled in, and, uh, like I said, tomorrow they're gonna start paving on that. That includes Park Avenue on the south side of Prairie View, from the five and a half street out to the Tera Garden subdivision on the north side of Lagoons. And it includes eighty-eighth Wall Avenue from where the pavement stopped, approximately nine hundred feet to the east, so. Um, the duration of that was, like we said, talked about earlier, it was a week, week, two weeks. They do have to do the eighty-eighth last, just because of all the trucks coming out of the subdivision and turning on that. It would just tear it up, it wouldn't be really anything, the asphalt wouldn't be any good by the time they were done, so. Uh, work progresses on the seventy-sixth Avenue Roundabout. Um, county is administering that, once, I don't have a whole lot of information for you today. They are continuing to work in the roundabout area, and, uh, once they're done with that, they'll move to the east along there, so.
Aren't they posting updates on the, the county website?
Through Flint Group.
Through Flint Group, isn't it?
Yeah, on the project.
They're doing some of that, yeah, and we're having weekly progress meetings. Uh, last week, the week before that was, uh, pretty much a rain week, so there wasn't a whole lot that got accomplished that week besides complaints. And things have dried out nicely after that, and they've been able to keep working, so. They did work Saturday and are progressing. So underground started last week, in the middle of last week, so that's the storm sewer culverts and that underneath the roundabout.
Temporary access for the construction site is in place, I haven't gone.
For which construction site, there's only about half a.
Well, for the, uh, for the water tower, I guess.
Construction's access for the water tower and the schools is in place and being used right now, yeah. So that's just north of the, uh, church, and it extends to the east of the school. And actually, it's, it continues up the private street on the school campus to seventy-sixth Avenue, so. There were some migrant trucks that were dumping on that hall, on that access road and continuing out to seventy-sixth, but there wasn't any construction traffic from a city or county project on seventy-sixth Avenue, so. Uh, maintenance is continuing on the, on the hall road, or the detour road, it's both on the west side of the river, and then that seventy-sixth Avenue on the east side of the river, so. Uh, Lakeview Drive, seventy-ninth and sixty-third contracts have been distributed to the contractor. We're gonna set up a pre-construction conference for probably early next week. Try to do it this week, but there's a lot of people that are, got some conflicts, it's a busy week, so first part of next week. I guess the one thing I did want to mention on that, I don't know if we want to talk too much about that, but one component of that project is grazing. So we've got the lift station number eight, that's the one that feeds the SSL. And right now, it is, it was designed before there was a water tower, before there was a street, before there was a school, for all that. So we have to raise that, the top of that structure up, to get the drainage to work around this water tower and those streets. So there is a component of that project that puts a barrel section on both, the woman raises the guide rails and the cables and all that stuff. So that's one of the first things that needs to get done before, and that's two parts, that needs to get done before that project, and it needs to get done before we start sending anything sewage-wise to Fargo. If we, I don't want to start it, turn it on, and then have to turn it off, or bypass pump it if we don't have to. So that was one of my, one of my, um, requests to the contractor, was get that done sooner than later. And he said that that shouldn't be a problem, but we just don't have a set schedule yet, we'll get that at the pre-construction conference, so.
Yeah, the sooner we can get that done, the better, that way we know that part of the whole thing is done, and then we can start trying to test that again.
Yes, yep. Uh, like I said, we did our open bids today on Vistos, we can talk about that in two weeks, but we did open bids, we got five bidders on that one, so. Uh, it was a little bit higher than our estimate, but not by much as a hundred and, hundred and some odd thousand dollars more. Nothing too, uh, too crazy. One thing I did want to talk to you guys about was putting a reviewed by signature block on all plan sets for the city. Uh, it's something that has kind of been, we do it typically on ours, it's something that I think we should add to all of them within our city projects. That way, there's no confusion that we've reviewed them, just to put a block on the cover or something that says that the city has reviewed the plan specifications. So, um, does that need to be a motion to incorporate that?
Maybe a good motion, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
Don't they just have dates now and all that kind of stuff, on all these versions, or whatever, so it's easier to know?
Yep, that way that it, in the, that way it's known that it's been reviewed, it's not a guess, or somebody's saying yes we have or haven't, so.
Absolutely, we should have, that's fine, I'll make a motion to give him the addition of signa, is it signature?
Uh, reviewed, a reviewed stamp.
It's a data block added to the.
Yep, it's a, it's a, it's a, it'll be a signature block, just a review, a reviewed stamp, kind of a thing.
Okay, to, so is that basically a resolution, or?
No, just a motion, fine.
Okay.
A motion in essence is a resolution.
Okay.
Brian makes the motion, do the second.
Second.
Chelsea does the second. Okay, I want to favor say hi.
Hi.
Motion carries. Jim, you got anything else?
Yep, I do, uh, the ad, ad for the shared use path went in the paper today, it's bid through North Dakota Park and Rec. They have the requirements that are needed for that, we will open bids on the twenty-fifth of June, with a potential award the first meeting in July, so, like I said, just hit the paper today, so.
Has there been any additional further discussions on water tower, water storage, water production?
We've kind of been waiting on some discussions of the ci, with the city, there's some things.
With Fargo, you mean, or?
Well, we are working with you as the city, who you work with.
All right, okay.
So that.
No.
We haven't moved anywhere on that.
Ending other discussions.
Okay.
This is probably the best way, best thing to say.
Uh, yeah, because, I mean, we, we want to, we want to get something moving so that we can at least plan for, communicate to residents around what are we doing to improve our quality, right? Because that's, that's a priority. We know we've got a production or capacity issue today, we know we've got issues with the water tower, we need to, we need to at least somehow land our plan for what we're gonna be able to have.
Yeah.
Uh, the other thing is.
We've got a lot going on, but.
Landmark Structures set up their crane today, you probably saw it on the way down, Dave, oh, maybe you didn't. They set up their tower crane for the center of the water tower today, so it's, uh, out, uh, at the water tower site. The foundation guys were five days ahead of schedule, so.
I get to see it.
You get to see it, they giving you a ride yet, to the top? From the pilot. So anyways, they, the, from, I talked last Tuesday with, with Casper Water users, and they were, they said that they seemed to be on schedule and things were going, going well for them, so. We had asked about, or you had asked about that at the last meeting, so, um, other than that, that's, that's all I have.
Okay. Uh, one last question, we have, has city, and maybe it's for both you and Brent, have we developed a list of road patching projects for the summer?
Public Works staff has, uh, been tasked to, you better, or look at the roads and identify where patches are necessary. Uh, they're still working on that.
I know there were some issues from, you know, areas that got torn up and didn't get fixed properly, we had some complaints from this spring, right? So I don't know if those got resolved, or if there's gonna take additional fixing to.
They, they have been doing cold patching, uh, but a more extensive patching, they said they haven't identified any others, other than the one that was off a Wall Avenue by the bridge there, uh, that was due to the road starting to have failures tied to it. Um, but, and the contractor availability, but other than that, for other hot mix patchings, so where you'd see a bigger patch, uh, they're still evaluating those as they're going through doing their cold mix, cold mix patches, so.
All right, so, right, so I guess maybe we can review a proposal to see how funds are being allocated for fixing, patching, upgrades, et cetera. For the priority areas, Kevin? You can schedule that sometime soon to go through that.
Yep.
Okay.
And on the portfolio reports?
I did have a couple items here.
Okay, cool.
Um, one item, the, one question that was asked at the last council meeting regarding meeting minutes. Uh, what we were finding is that some of them were not in the paper as quick as we'd like, so we have caught up on that. And in the future, what you'll be seeing are meeting summaries. So it'll just have a lit, you know, summary of key points, uh, like the motions, the votes, what has passed, but it's not gonna be as detailed as what you would see in meeting minutes. Uh, it just really gets a highlight of what actions were taken by council at the time. Uh, that's in consultation with the League of Cities and what they need to do, uh, so talking with legal, uh, making sure that we're covering our basis of what needs to be done, so. That will be approaches changing within staff of, here's how we're going to make sure we're meeting any requirements tied to that. Um, but for any meetings that were not captured yet, everything has been taken care of except for the last meeting, our last council meeting, which will be done with this meeting, so we'll do those two publications at the same time. Another item, Jim was talking about sewer, the SSL line, sewer line. We are able to, uh, send some flows that way after we meet with Fargo. However, the cost for that sewage that we'd send to Fargo, based on the contract that we have, I believe is for three dollars per thousand gallons. We charge a dollar seventy-five, or about, yeah, dollar seventy-five per thousand. Big discrepancy, we're talking a dollar and a quarter, so. That's something that when we get closer to that time, or we start sending sewage to them, we're gonna have to consider, what point do we do a rate increase on sewer? We can send some to Fargo, we could throttle it back or open the valve to be, say, like thirty percent open, or a certain percentage open. So not everything is going to Fargo, but we're starting to send some, and then we can kind of gauge how, what our costs are tied to that. And that's where I think we can accomplish some incremental increases, instead of doing everything all at once. We're probably gonna have to do a jump, but then after that, we could really do incremental increases. Uh, we also have a rate study being done by Midwest Assistance Program, uh, that's through partnership with the state. Hopefully, we can get some, I believe it's Midwest Assistance Program, it may be. But we should be getting some information soon from them, I spoke with that individual doing that study for us. Uh, the other week, just about a week and a half ago, a week ago, and she said she's still, she's working on that information. Hopefully, we'll get something together soon from them.
When you get something to review, I'd like to.
Yep, yes, you'll be reached out with the draft, because it will be, uh, the one area that will, they'll have their initial findings, but then looking at capital improvements or accounting for capital tied to that. Uh, the last item I have is in regards to the finance director position and update on that. Uh, council member Fennel and I did interviews about a week ago with two candidates. Uh, we both felt comfortable bringing them forward to a final interview with the city council. We'd be having a special city council meeting on Wednesday, if that works. If it works for the council, if we could do that, we'd have a council meeting on Wednesday. Uh, that would be a special city council meeting, just like we did with my position and the community development director position, where being as a, more like a department head or senior staff position, we like to have them engage the council, you get a chance to meet them, ask questions, they'll do a little presentation, just highlighting a couple of questions, talking about themselves, uh, what they could do, and then more of a conversation council with those individuals, except council member Fennel and I both met with them already. Uh, but we have two candidates that we'd like to get council feedback on for that.
What time do you think it'll be Wednesday?
Five o'clock will be the first one, six the second.
So we'll have to publish that, right?
Yeah, we'll inform, we'll inform the appropriate parties for a special meeting for that. Yep, that's all I have.
Okay, sorry, I need to jump forward here so quickly. Okay, and the portfolio reports, um, nothing new on the diversion update at this point. Just wanted to do a couple extra things here, too. Had to give credit where credits do, the county did pave that road south of seven oh seventeen here, south of town, it is paved now, uh, it's nice.
Oh, for the, the.
Had a little loop, had a little roundabout thing, they had their, that's paved now, and so glad they got that done, so. Uh, shout out to Jason Benson, thanks for doing that. Jimmy, on the de, on the treatment for the detours, um, the contractor, they've been kind of watching it a little bit. It looked like a couple areas have gotten to a point where they're throwing dust again, I mean, they're the ones that, they're watching that.
There's the contractor, we have a meeting tomorrow, status meeting tomorrow, so we can bring that up tomorrow for the meeting.
Yeah, and I'll, I drive it every day, I'm just trying to watch. Yeah, and I, I'll, being a driver every day, I'm just trying to watch too, if we start throwing out more dust, it's just.
There's some watch boarding.
Right, and there's.
Yeah. I was gonna ask if they've been out there again, cause some of the corners and stuff are a little.
Yep, and that's kind of, kind of what we're thinking too, it might be alright, just to maybe walk over that again too, because there's so, getting these so soft spots, which I assume is gonna happen for the amount of traffic that we're getting there, but they can maybe take a gauge on that as well and see what they got there. The other thing I was gonna mention too, Lindsay, I suppose you heard about the stewardess complaints about speeding through town here. Um, got another one yesterday, you know, up and down Main here, people are driving too fast, so. Um, that'd just be something to keep an eye on, so, cause I know the kids will be out here, you know, wandering around too and the people just gotta realize they gotta slow down a little bit, so.
Who do we put in a request to get the sign, the flashing speed sign? Should that, should we pick that up?
County road, I suppose.
Yeah, the trailer that.
Oh.
So where is it at now?
It's on sixty four.
Sunny side area.
Oh, it's on sunny side.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Tells you I've not been down that road.
Obviously, Seaton.
Good, eh?
Good on you.
You're, you're talking about signage too. One thing that was added, I believe it was, um, Jim, where, did they put the blinking on sunny side there? I, I believe they're looking, they're doing the blinking red light. I haven't driven that section, cause I take the detour route, uh, but, uh, as of late, I haven't driven it, so. But they, that was one request and I believe the county was working on getting that done too. So, just to call attention to some signs, cause it's easy for folks to blow through those.
I mean, it's clear that the traffic on, you know, Main through town is obviously increased.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
It's just incredible, so I find it hard, find it hard that some people are speeding, cause there's so much traffic. But on the other hand, like when there isn't as much traffic, it probably does, people are more inclined.
The other thing, if people are learning to slow down, they're passing out on the diversion road. You know, when it was muddy, people were passing, just gotta slow down and just be patient, cause somebody's gonna get hurt. And I said, I don't want that to happen. So the other thing I had on my list here that I didn't have written down here is I wanted to do a call out and thanks to Drone Dan for taking that photo of the Roundabout up there. Um, so that was cool, so thanks for that and posting that out there. So it'd be fun to get some statuses like that every once in a while, people shoot like that. So Dan, if you're so inclined, feel free.
Well, it could be something where do we ask him to do, you know, monthly or do we update or something like that?
It just kind of gives a nice overview of what's going on, so everybody can see what's happening up there.
It is kind of cool just to have that view, cause otherwise we'd be, we wouldn't see that.
Yep, probably have to do the school too, cause they got concrete going in.
Oh, yeah. Do just kind of the whole area of what's going on.
You guys don't get to see that. No. Really watch from afar, man, I'm telling you.
You can't see, cause you don't have a way to get out of your driveway now, so.
It better be fixed by the time I get there. Driving on your lawn, that's a code.
Anyway. Okay, Johnston out here, Dave, what do you got?
John, nothing here, front, uh, front one over it.
Okay. Chelsea?
Nothing.
No, nothing new.
Okay.
Rachel, adjourned?
If that's all it is, I'm gonna ask for an adjournment.
Second.
Brian does the first, Chelsea's the second, all in favor, say hi.
Hi.
And we are done.